Thank you so much to the School Health Advisory Committee for being so patient in our being a bit late tonight. As you can tell, we are all enthusiastically digging into each of these reports. And so with that, I will turn over the agenda to the Shack. And I actually am.
Here, I'm going to try and be brief. I won't go for more than two or three hours. And I'll apologize in advance because my IT department had his fourth grade Virginia Studies SOL today, so there is no PowerPoint tonight. We're just going to sort of talk. You like it? All right, so I do want to be brief. I'd rather have more time for Q and A than my palaver. But you guys have the report in front of you, and rather than start at the start, I want to jump to the middle and go straight to the overall performance metrics section because I have some, I think, exciting news to report, although it's, the newness of it is not terribly, but it is still exciting to the committee. This self-reporting that we've done with the metrics and the responses to these survey questions indicates that FCPS is doing a very good job across a wide number of areas. We're seeing very strong scores in our implementation of all sorts of policies such as recess no longer being withheld as a disciplinary measure, or to catch up on the homework, or whatever. We see schools addressing the topics of depression, adverse mental health impacts, these things. There's always room for improvement, but we are seeing data that's showing that we're doing a pretty good job of addressing these things. The coolest part of all this is that now we can access this information from two different pathways. We have the youth survey, which provides the results of what the students are seeing on the ground, and we also have the metrics themselves, which is essentially self-reporting by the grownups. And so what you can do when you have both of those sort of competing but collaborative sources of information is you can compare one against the other. If the metrics from the wellness committees indicate that we have, say, a 4.58 out of five in depression being addressed successfully in the curriculum, and yet you have a sort of disparate result in the self-reporting of students in the youth survey, then there's a disconnect there. And so by virtue of having these two avenues of data, we can access those sort of disconnects and address them. We can dial down on where the problems are and figure out ways to improve them. So it is early. We have good results from the metrics, the wellness reporting. Most of the categories, we're seeing very strong results. One of the weakest categories that we see thus far is the publicity of the committees themselves. So, you know, the schools are, I think we have 100% participation. I guess that's the rule, so they're doing it. But what we don't have is awareness among the community that these things exist. And so if you look at recommendation number five on my list of Exhibit A, the proposal's sort of towards the end, I think that we need to do a better job of getting this information in the hands of parents. And I'm not one for chopping down a bunch of trees to make paper flyers, but if you do it for a year or two to sort of jumpstart the awareness of this issue, put it in the back-to-school night package that everybody gets, everybody reads, most everyone reads that stuff, that's your, I think, biggest bang-for-the-buck opportunity to get this in the hands of parents. And the benefit of these committees in the first place is transparency, right? So we have, you know, we have the students' reporting and your internal, the youth survey system, and now we have the ability technically for parents to participate in the wellness committees along with the administrators, but if they're not aware, they can't do it. Their awareness is what drives the improvements that we'll see in health and wellness in the first place. Transparency is a wonderful thing. Everybody gets that. So let's maybe think about ways to get that message broadcast more effectively. And I think this is one way to do it. You guys might have other ideas. We have email blast. Dr. Brabran has an email blast kind of thing. I think maybe old-fashioned paper flyer for a couple of years to get this up and running. Yes?
Yeah, because the, I mean, it was actually, our number-one goal was to have for the first, you know, sort of kickoff year, to get these wellness committees up and running and including community members, parents, students, at least at the high school level, because we were thinking that would help generate wellness activities, and those would be not all the same at every school. It would depend on the composition of those committees. So we were a little disappointed to see the, that the wellness committees are often, you know, three staff members that are, you know, either assigned or volunteering for those duties. And I think the best example was McLean High School, actually. Their PTA has a wellness committee. And Betty, who's on our committee, just spoke to the chair of the McLean PTA Wellness Committee, who had no idea that FCPS now was supposed to have a wellness committee in every school. So they have actually sort of two separate, they've got their FCPS staff group that's wellness committee, and then the PTA doing their thing and not even knowing about each other. So.
So that's sort of just by virtue of, I think, the newness of this idea. It will take care of itself over time, but if transparency is the goal and is ultimately the benefit of this, I think we need to work a little bit harder to get that messaging out. That's the happy bit. The growly bit is in the actual answer choices to the metrics that Shack devised in the first place. So a couple of years ago now, I guess, we put together the reporting questions that we thought were important, and we put together sort of a response scheme, which had sort of technical terms like meets or exceeds, or, you know, not applicable, yes, no, words that mean stuff. After we developed that document, ORSE, which is, I think, is the Office of Research in curious acronyms, changed the answer choices to things like emerging, or what are the other ones?
There's transitioning, exploring.
Exploring.
Emerging.
So, right. What is the difference between emerging and exploring? Does any, I have no idea. And so they're sort of, they're, obviously someone's put thought into how these things, it's okay, I don't mind, into how these things sort of work together, and there are point values ascribed to each term, but when a parent looks at these answers, it means nothing. And so I really think that there are two issues there. One, we could use better words. I liked our words better. But two, after Shack submitted our ideas on how this sort of survey should be reported, it got changed, and it never came back to Shack. So that, I think, is problematic. If we're the appointed representatives of the community, but things change without us having a say, that's not good. So we made a recommendation, which is number seven, on the recommendation, was essentially change the things back.
Especially, we felt it was especially important to have not applicable, because they got rid of that one. And so then, when you read the principal's comments, a lot of times, they were literally commenting, "We couldn't really answer this one."
Right. You needed not applicable.
We had thought of that, because if it's about recess and you're a high school principal, it isn't, it's not applicable.
Right. It's actually number six, not number seven. Speaking of recess, you guys did a fantastic job in recent years in increasing the amount of recess that kids are getting. However, there is still room for improvement. So thank you, great work, let's keep it going. For instance, in elementary school, if you're a first grader and you have two 15-minute chunks of recess, by the time you get 36-year-olds out to the basketball court, you've used up your seven minutes, and by the time you get them back in, recess is gone. And there hasn't, the value of recess is not just the physical activity, it's also the unstructured time so kids can go explore their ideas and their friendships and their social everything. So if recess time is being used up in just the transition, that's not an effective use of time. So perhaps we could combine those things. Perhaps we can come up with a way to increase recess time. I know it's hard to fit more minutes in the day and magically conjure them. Did you, you have a thing?
No.
Okay. Oh, all right. Good, good. So, yes, I mean, it's a point, I think we're all in violent agreement on this. Recession is good for kids, and so when it's used up, that's not ideal. Let's come up with a way to improve that situation if we can. On that same point, we had a consistent theme of, I guess, communication from the community from those three middle schools, which have sixth graders attending the middle school, but the sixth graders don't get recess because there aren't recess facilities at the middle school. This is a problem we need to address for those kids, because they're technically elementary school students. I don't know legally, I am a lawyer, but I'm not purporting to be one tonight. Legally, they're still elementary kids. There's a Virginia requirement that ensures that they have recess time, they have access to this resource. But for instance, in middle school, you do have the four minutes between classes. That's not unstructured time. That doesn't count, because, yes, you're walking, moving your body, but you're not getting a brain break. There is physical education class at middle school, obviously, and that's, you know, the timing of it is adequate in some ways, but it's also not unstructured. So we're missing, especially for those, they're still elementary kids, and I think this is important, and we're seeing a lot of sort of input from the community in those schools that this is an issue. So I think we need to do more to address that problem. Let's talk about briefly AP and IB courses, and I want to be very careful, because the committee did not spend a whole lot of time on this issue this year, because we did last year, and we sort of produced ideas for you guys, and I understand that there's a meeting that's taking place in September where this gets discussed. We simply would like for you to refer to last year's report, which I attached as Exhibit something, I think it's Exhibit B on this, which basically says, "Let's think about a cap on AP and IB classes in order to address the issue of student stress." That issue isn't going away. Everyone, I think, would agree that a larger sort of societal conversation is in order on this issue, because we don't need to punish our kids to push, push, push always to get into Harvard. It's just not necessary. It's not even good. However, waiting for a societal change is going to take longer than even I can talk in one sitting. So we need to, we need to, I think, jumpstart this. If FCPS isn't going to be the one to push this issue and come up with a solution, who is? Like, who in the country has the size, the resources, the expertise that FCPS has? You guys in this room are the ones who can make this change. We suggested a 2-2-3-3 cap. So two in ninth grade, two in 10th grade, three in three. That's still 10 AP classes. It would still cover probably 90-something percent of the students, but what it does is it sets a tone that the grownups are aware that stress is an issue for kids. We're aware of the connections between stress and all sorts of awful results that we don't like to talk about. So let us jumpstart that conversation in the community by addressing it meaningfully. When you guys talk about that in September, I can't wait to hear what the results are. There are all sorts of ideas on how to address this issue. We can look harder at homework caps, but that's very difficult to do, because kids need different amounts of time to do their calculus problems. Time is a big factor for our high school students, and we spoke to a lot of them this year, and I commended a few of them in the report, a couple of the groups from Madison High School. We had a lot of really high flyers come in and talk to us about their levels of stress and the just paltry amounts of sleep that they're getting. Two, three hours a night consistently for 17- and 18-year-olds is, it's just not enough.
And they all drove to the meeting.
They all drove to the meeting. So that's not even safe. And I think there was almost unanimity among the students that came to talk, that they felt if someone limited the number of AP and IP, IB classes they could take, that would reduce their stress, because they're no longer allowed to push themselves to take these ridiculous schedules, which then sets a tone for all the other kids in the schools, too. So it's a way to impact a small number of students, which then sets off a wave that it impacts a lot more students. It impacts a larger community conversation. It's an idea. So if it's the idea, great. If not, great, but we really need for you guys to help us on this issue. It's one of the most important things impacting health and wellness for our students. The issue of drowsy driving. Phyllis, do you want to talk about that? That's sort of your.
Well, with the youth risk survey, we would really like to see a question added about drowsy driving. We want to see a question added about drowsy driving to the youth risk behavior survey, and so we sent a letter making that request.
So drowsy driving is exactly what it sounds like, but it's relevant to the schools, because if homework load, if sports practices, if other time commitments impact the level of sleep that students are getting, then FCPS is essentially driving to some degree this issue. And so it would seem to me to be the appropriate thing to do, to gather information on how many kids are willing to self-report as driving drowsily. This is, you know, it's how we make a sort of societal impact on an issue that we have some control over. I think it just makes sense to ask the question, and I think that that has already been forwarded to the appropriate FCPS people. They're now considering it.
And county people.
County people. If you guys wanted to put your foot on the gas pedal a little bit, I think that would be okay. Effects of screen time in school. And this is, I think I flagged it a little bit last year, but I'm going to flag it a little more deeply this year. We had a number of speakers and commenters and public interest in general on the issue of the amount of screen that's happening in school. So it can be, you know, adaptive learning software, it can be Facebook, it can be phones in classrooms, on buses, wherever. So I'm a dad, I've got far too many kids, if any of you want one, I can loan them out. I try and set limits on screen time. One of my kids, for instance, has severe anxiety, screen time's a bad thing. Even for the kids who don't have issues with screen time in and of itself, I, as a parent, would like to be able to set some limit or exert some amount of control over how much exposure to screen my kids are having in a day. If they are using it in school, even in an educational setting, that undermines my ability as a parent, and I think I'm far from alone in feeling a little bit funny about that. In addition, we are finding all kinds of evidence building slowly on the web that is, and not just, you know, the internet is telling us this thing, but actual sort of, I'm losing my word.
Peer-reviewed research.
Peer-reviewed research. There, thank you, Tom. That is showing that there are, there are connections, correlations at least, between adverse, well, I guess, inferior educational outcomes and increased use of screen, even if that screen is educational in nature. Nothing, I think, is ever going to be teacher-student interaction, a personal touch. That's how people have been learning for zillions of years. You guys, I'm sure, know in your own experience that if you write something down, it fires the neurons in your head in a different way that helps you retain information in a superior manner to typing it. If you take an information in a book, a textbook, you will retain it, and studies will show this, you will retain it differently and better than you will if you take it in off of a screen. So parents, I think, are concerned about the, I mean, it's, they're concerned about the usage of this even in an educational setting. It's wonderfully efficient. It's great to have an iPad teach math and differentiate all the kids in the class. There are all sorts of advantages to differentiating students. However, there's a cost associated with that. And so the level of concern, I think, not just in FCPS, but nationally, is slowly on the increase on this issue. It's a real issue, and I think that it would be helpful, and I'm sure you'll hear about it more, if you guys will begin to consider this, in whether we need to set guidelines on the use of screen in school. I've covered just about all of it. Diversity in the Composition of Shack, I heard the D-word a number of times in the previous presentation. It's a wonderful resource that we have access to in the county. It's been suggested to me that if the membership of Shack begins to take on the appearance more accurately of the community, then our relevance, our significance will increase at the same time. It just seems to make sense. And so you guys are the ones who appoint Shack members. All I would ask for you to do at this time is simply keep that in mind. Diversity is, I think, a benefit to this committee even more than others. We've addressed our charge for the next year. You guys can see those topics there. Phyllis is going to be our chair next year, so thanks, Phyllis. This is sort of her home.
It was a moment of insanity when everyone else was silent.
And so I would like to thank all those members of Shack who helped so much during the year. We'd like to thank Sandy for her support. She's not here. Thank Joe Thompson for his input, especially on a lot of the challenging issues. He had really sound thoughts on AP and IB. There was not unanimity in our discussions, but it was, once again, a very productive and open year for discussion in the committee. So thank you, guys. Thank you, Leah. And I guess we'll, Teresa, will take questions.
Thank you very much. We do have a few questions this evening. I'll start with Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Ms. Keys-Gamar.
Great. Well, first of all, I really appreciate the structure of your report. We're at the end Exhibit A. You just listed them all there, and you'll be happy to know that pretty much all of them, I just went, check, yep, 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 yep. So number six, on the fact that ORSE changed your language, and as a fellow recent parent, I will agree, I don't think the language was clear. I gave an exclamation, amen. So to my colleagues and Dr. Brabran, I hope that gets fixed and does not happen again. At minimum, as the committee was asking if ORSE is going to do that, they need to show respect to the advisory committee and send the draft language back saying they would recommend these changes. But it's not okay to ask our advisors to work this hard on something and then have it changed on them. I don't think that reflects well on the division doing something like that. I will also say that I would like to know where the board can access the wellness metric, metrics, results.
You want to pull that up?
So.
If you. Can you hear me now? If you go to FCPS.edu, and in the search you just put wellness reporting, you'll see each school's individual report, and then there's an executive summary there. It's also linked to the School Health Advisory Committee webpage.
Okay. And that ties in beautifully also, David, what you were saying is, the school board members, the school division, we need to do some really intentional work around raising awareness for our community about these wellness committees, because they're great with intention, but we need to make sure they understand. The driving while drowsy, anyone who does an internet search, and you will see that being drowsy for sleep, lack of sleep, adequate sleep, is the same as being intoxicated. And in fact, they showed even just one night of sleeplessness can raise your, or reduce your functionality as if you had a blood alcohol level of .1, which is over the drunk legal limit. So we do need to continue to be more intentional with our sleep language. And then, David, I appreciate you talking about the AP and IB. I would like to see Shack maybe help us get some more information about school divisions that have taken this. I know the state of North Carolina did it at the college admissions level, saying that all public universities in their metric for admissions would not reward beyond five AP or IB courses. The suggestions you have on the 2-2-3-3, I think that still actually could be too much for ninth and 10th graders. I know you guys are just trying to get us to start thinking about it. And I'll just finally close out by just saying that I still think our biggest problem is we are over-testing, we are over-assessing with massive amounts of homework levels. It creates problems for teacher workload, creates problems for kids, and that's where the intentional work needs to be done.
Thank you very much. I just, I don't know if I'm supposed to, but I'm going to comment anyway, because I'm big. So I think it's a market-based system, essentially, the college admissions process, and so I think there are some sort of arbitrary rules out there. We're not going to count any more than five, and that's great. That somebody did something, and that's wonderful. I think, sort of more broadly speaking, across the United States as a market, students are not punished if they haven't met X number of AP classes in their, under their belt. They are required to essentially take something close to the maximum amount that is authorized by their school system. So if the school system is in rural Kentucky and they offer two, if you take two, then you're golden. If you're in FCPS, you'd better be taking 12, better be taking 10. So it's up to you guys. It will, it does not impact the student's competitiveness from the research that Shack has reviewed, to reduce, to set a cap, or simply reduce the number of courses these kids take. They just have to do what is offered. You have to take as rigorous a curriculum as your district will provide.
Thank you. Ms. Keys-Gamar?
First of all, thank you for this report, and I'll just continue with that. I remember discussing that last year, I believe, and we got a lot of pushback from parents. So I think a big part of this is getting our community to understand that this is a part of an unhealthy pattern. And, you know, that, I think that is the rub, and it may be, in fact, that those parents are influencing what kids sign up for. It's kind of a vicious cycle, and so I'd love to collaborate on how best to get that across. But I will tell you, the biggest defenders of not putting in a cutoff was parents. So with respect to screen time, completely agree. I know that there are different learners. Some people, they have a different response if they're holding a book as opposed to screen time. So I would love for us to have some mechanism by which we look at what's the best practice, because I do think that we need balance with respect to screen time. We can't ignore technology, obviously, but we certainly cannot, I don't think that we should be without textbooks at all. And so what is the balance? And I'm hoping, Dr. Brabran, that we can explore how best to do that, because I think 100% no more books is probably not the best way to go. I have to say that I had two things that I was hoping to hear more about. One of them is the homework policy. We've heard from our students that, you know, how much we, how we implement our homework in our schools is adding to stress, and so I'd like to hear more from your committee, and perhaps even, I don't know if that can be joined with surveys, but we've got to find a way to do that. As long as I've been on the board, we've been talking about it. I haven't seen anything really happening in how to address it. And just my last comment, because they're timing me, is I also wanted to hear more about jeweling and vaping. It appears to be a real, it's a real crisis in our schools, and kids are not aware of what they're doing, I am convinced. And it can lead to all sorts of addictions, and they don't know what they're ingesting. And so really need to get some, a greater grip on that.
So thank you for those comments, good insights. I'd like to address them all really briefly. On the AP IB cap, there are any number of reasons to not do it. Joe made very eloquent arguments for the last two years over why he feels that setting a cap on AP and IB classes would essentially limit student access to various subjects. You'd narrow the range of AP courses that were available, and that's a negative impact. You want to have all the options available for everybody. Good point. There's a counterpoint in that if you have all these options available in the first place, it simply encourages a drive to take everything. And so you have to balance those. You guys are the ones who need to make these decisions. Shack can recommend it. Last year, we recommended a cap. This year, we agreed to recommend last year's recommendation, if that makes any sense. I didn't want to spend a whole lot of committee time on it, because you guys haven't had a chance to act fully. So there are considerations also. A lot of parents don't like it, but if you think about it, if you set a cap at 10 courses, you would be capping a very small percentage of schools. So it's partly a parent education issue.
We did have data about how many students took more than 10, so we can send you.
It's a small number of students, but it sets a large tone. So these are, they're useful conversations that you guys are in the position to have. On textbooks, that was one of the things we discussed as a committee this year, and that might be one way to get at this issue of overwhelming kids with screen time. Why can't we just have paper textbooks available to those students who request them? There are some still. I was able to request some for my kids this year, but very few people know that, and even fewer probably do it. There's a limited quantity of these books available. If we maintain that resource, research will indicate we learn better from books in paper than we do from screens. It only makes sense. On homework policy, it doesn't matter what the policy is, because nobody abides by it. Just like, it doesn't matter what the sports practice policy is, because people don't abide by it. We've heard evidence from students for years now saying, "There is a cap in how many hours volleyball practice or cheerleading or whatever can go." Those limits are frequently ignored. If it's not an official requirement, then it's only a requirement if you really want to play. You better stay till the end of practice. It's that sort of issue. It's sort of informal, tacit understandings that you need to put in more time than you're allowed to put in. Homework, my middle schoolers are putting in more time on homework than the high school students are allowed to put in. The policies don't work, simply because there are times in the year when tests stack up or projects stack up. At the end of the school year, everything's stacking up, end of reporting periods. Also, the issue that I think Pat discussed last year, in that simply some kids take more time for assignments than other kids. So if you set a cap that affects kid one, but he's slower than kid two at the same thing, you've impacted kids differently, it's very difficult to come up with a solution. That's why I thought A-B-I-P, A-P-I-B is one way to address this, that sort of matches everyone's pace. It's, that's one of the considerations, please.
So we had Carlyn Floyd on Shack a couple of years ago, who, I think if you guys could bring her in to talk, she had some great things that she was implementing at Woodson. I don't know how they're going now, but a couple of years ago, it sounded like a great approach. She was having the kids report, so they're both taking the same class, but different sections with different teachers. How much homework do you have? You'd expect it to be the same. It wasn't the same. So then.
And the kids know that.
Right. So the kids, right.
They're dramatic.
Well, they don't always have a choice, right? It's assigned. So then Carlyn. So then Carlin was getting the teachers together to talk to one another. Your kids are reporting you only have one hour of homework. Your kids are reporting they have two. It's the same class. What are you doing differently? And having the teacher have that professional conversation and learning opportunity, I don't know how it's turned out, but it sounded like a great approach.
And briefly on jeweling and vaping, we had a public comment at, I think, our penultimate meeting where a parent brought up this issue because apparently they do have different propensities for addiction. There are all sorts of reasons why these things are much worse than people realize. It's an issue in school. And her point, and it was a good point, and I probably should have written it, but I just didn't think of it because I wrote this late at night, there is no resource that she could think of. Her son had been suspended or punished from the school because he got caught with the jeweling equipment. There was no resource for him who had already been addicted, partly because of stress, partly environmental whatevers. Who's he going to go talk to about that? He's already addicted to this. If you bring it into the school, if you talk about it with people, you're going to get yourself in trouble. This happened to him. He got suspended. So we need, we need some sort of intervention mechanism, you know, not just like a zero tolerance, you're gone kind of policy. We need to help these kids. First and foremost, it's a wellness issue. Welcome.
I would remind that Ms. Keys-Gamar had an amendment last year on addictive substances. So Ms. Palchuk, please.
Sure. Thank you. Appreciate, you always have such a wide breadth of topics that you cover. And I guess I have a couple of questions about those and then looking at the charge for next year. So the first one would be around the middle school. I know Ms. Evans and I and a few others have met with some of the parents who were asking for some kind of a break and et cetera. And I guess I'm excited to see, I believe it's one of the recommended charges for next year, or it's not. Yes, number, no, start time, so not this. So I guess my question is, you have a lot of really interesting things, the wellness committees and the middle school start times. I guess it's more of a question rather than taking on so many new topics. Because I'm just wondering, you know, I think it would benefit us if you're willing to help us go a little more deeply into what can we do with the middle school break request? What is the role of the wellness committees? Because I'm wondering, I think that's a great recommendation for better exposure, but as I'm trying to figure out how I send that out, I'm still unclear as to what I'm asking or what I'm sharing or how we get, you know, the way Carlin worked with principals, what we can do to help facilitate some of that ownership within those committees, so.
So one of the things we really wanted to do with when wellness committees were up and running was to feature some of the activities and things that they've done. And so it was interesting talking in committee. Joe actually was telling us about a lot of the things that are done in the buildings. People don't even realize that they're part of the wellness goals. And so our schools are really doing a lot of great things, and so we'd like to feature them through the wellness committees. And one of the, you know, as we were building the wellness policy and on Shaq and in the community, right, you have different people who are passionate about different things, right? So if it's my school, I'm doing sleep education, right? But we've got other advocates who are doing let's bike to school day or, you know, safe routes to school, walking. And we didn't want to sort of squash or limit the different possibilities and say every school must be doing this activity this year because it just doesn't make sense in our school system. So instead, what we'd like to do is, when a, like Minds Matter that Madison has, right? Featuring that so that other high schools, who, some of them already have it, but some of them don't. But they might say, oh, wow, look at what they're doing. That's so cool. We could do that, too. I mean, that's sort of, that's the end goal of building these committees up and having volunteers help so the principal doesn't have to do it all, so the staff doesn't have to do it all. I mean, we have an incredibly passionate, involved community, and why not sort of tap into those resources? And we know they're different in every building.
Well, and that's sort of the whole thing. I mean, if you'll forgive the political implication, it's a market-based system. If you increase access to this marketplace of ideas, if you get this, if you inform the community that they're allowed to participate, get involved, contribute to these committees, then you have a much bigger set of ideas that come into you guys to distill than you'll get from Shaq. We heard a lot of sort of ideas from the community. Students are forming clubs to address mental health and overall wellness and stress. That's fantastic.
Green schools, green cleaning products. There are schools that are, you know, devoted to, you know, putting in energy-saving devices and kids are doing it, you know? And this is an opportunity to feature those stories. You know, you could put that in your newsletter, feature one of the stories, Mantua Kids are doing this.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate, and I guess that's a little bit of where we're getting at. A lot of, from what I've seen, a lot of what those, we have, you know, the Garden Club at Mantua and the other, you know, Dr. Braybrand and I went and did some yoga together with the classroom. And because every school is different, but we've now kind of imposed a wellness committee in each school, I guess my question is sort of the beyond asking us to do more outreach and maybe that's the first step. What's the next step, right? So how do we help support, figure out what's happening at different schools, share those practices? I guess, what do you see as the next kind of evolution of, they've started, we advertise them, I guess a recommendation of where to go with them?
I don't want to sound obtuse at all, but I think, I think it's, it all builds on itself. So if you have this community awareness that these things exist, more ideas come in, more follow-through from parents comes in, that provides more political pressure, if you will. There are a lot of, not a lot, there are a number of principals in FCPS, just like everywhere else in the world, who are very entrenched and they are, they are more or less accepting of community involvement and ideas than others. If you have a principal who's entrenched and who's doing the survey all by himself or herself, you're going to get a very different result as to whether things are embedded or emerging, or other words that sound the same, than if you had the PTA involved or if you had students involved. That's something we'd like to see, especially in middle and high school, get students involved. You get students involved in these issues, then suddenly you really do have political pressure that sheds a lot of sunlight on these issues. And then the ideas come and the clubs pop up. And then in your email sort of briefings to your constituents, you can say, hey, look at what this school is doing. All these ideas come up. We need a way to get these ideas, I guess, gathered in the first place and then distributed. They'll become gathered once more people are aware of them. And then we, as a committee, whoever is the recipient of all these ideas can then give it to you guys to distribute.
I don't want to, I appreciate that. And I guess my question for you would be, I don't know, I can't pinpoint one wellness committee that's really like gone above and beyond any others. So I don't know if you've had some examples of ones that you're like, please highlight these, you know?
Okay. Well, I think what we've learned from the survey is that there are very few actually growing, right? So we want to, Shaq thought basically the first step in really getting this policy out and to grow was to build these committees. So step one is literally inviting participation. And we know that it'll be hard or impossible at some schools, but step one is just getting it off the ground.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you so much.
And I think we could share, you know, some ideas, like Minds Matter. We had Calm come and talk to us. That was amazing. I'd love to see that mindfulness program grow. I'm sorry. Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Could I ask a couple of questions regarding a capping AP IB test? Probably 10 altogether, 10 sounds pretty reasonable number. And I'm sure that there are students that who want to do more than 10 and, you know, fast majority do less than 10. The question that, one of the questions that I have is the distribution of those 10. You know, freshmen capping at two versus junior capping at three, there is a huge difference between expectation from everybody on the, basically what juniors can, juniors are expected to do versus what freshmen. So two and three, then, I think the distribution, I may disagree doing it that way. I don't see that many freshmen doing two APs, even for the sophomore, two is quite a lot. But for many of the juniors, three, a lot of them do more than three. And so might want to take a look at that. Another question about, you know, capping, we as, you know, light house school district, benchmarking school district, maybe take a lead in this area? That's a great, noble thought. You know, I'm not going to, I'm not going to argue with making that advocacy from your committee. However, the reasons why that many parents may oppose capping it is thinking that that's limiting their children's potential of getting into certain colleges. I think that's what's driving behind so many APs and IP tests, you know, IP courses students are taking. What if, what if doing, doing some sort of more global approach, expanded approach, regional basis, not just a Fairfax, because our students may compete with the students from Loudon and Prince William and Arlington Alexandria? We should be all together in this. So, you know, parents may say that if you just cap our Fairfax County students, our students were far behind all the students unless college admissions office come out and say, we're going to limit it to six, five, four. We're not going to look at anything above that. So maybe that's, might be an approach that we should take. And I had one more question about AP versus post-AP. You seem to have, the committee seems to have less concern about post-AP. Is that because post-AP, it sounds there has a less workload for the post-AP courses?
Yes, essentially.
Okay, let me finish with this. Is that mainly because post-APs do not come with the AP exams? Whether AP courses come with the AP exams, where you have a lot of pressure to perform well on those exams and those pressures go to not only just the students, but also teachers that may drive and, you know, and requiring more work by teachers and students? And students putting pressure upon themselves as well?
So it's a, it's a complex analysis, and you've touched on some issues that we dive into as a committee, but we don't, they don't really make it in the six-page summary. The post-AP classes is the same issue as the two AP cap for ninth graders. There are very few students who access these resources. Not too many ninth graders do it, but there are some. And so for those who are super duper duper smart and need access to APs in ninth grade or those who complete the AP curriculum by the time they're done with 12th grade and they go on to essentially upper-level college courses before they even leave high school, we did not want to because there's so few, because the workload is different. There are no AP exams, as you identified, in those courses. There was less of a reason to cap those. This is how this issue begins to get complex. So it's not just, it's, nothing is ever perfectly simple. But we felt that by allowing, you could also do a sort of holistic approach and say you can take 10 through high school, do them however you want. It's another way to do it. Or pick your numbers. It doesn't really matter what the number is. You guys can choose that. We just want to get at the issue itself and put in some sort of safety net for schools. You mentioned that you're hearing concern from parents, or you would imagine parents are concerned that if Fairfax County imposes a cap, but Loudon County does not, what happens? Are our students suddenly less competitive than Loudon? That would be a bad result. The evidence we've seen, the information we've seen says, no, it doesn't impact anyone because college admissions officers all know Fairfax County. It's, everyone knows Fairfax County at all the schools anyone's concerned about. And so if there's a cap, that will be taken into account. You also get into a group action problem. If you start worrying about what Loudon's going to, I think of, I'm a political sort of person, but if you think about, you know, the climate change issue, if the United States imposes a cap, but India doesn't, what happens? If you have agreement among a number of countries or agreement among a number of counties, but then somebody changes their mind, then you've broken the entire system. Somebody has to go first. And I really feel like Fairfax County is, has resources that so few school systems have. I think if anyone is going to begin to change this conversation, it needs to be us. I can't think of another school system in a better position to do it than ours.
I'm out of time.
Yes. And with that, I do have a go-back by Ms. McLaughlin, but I have just a couple of comments before I allow her go-back. And it is on your recommendations. Essentially, I want to talk a little bit about the wellness committees at the various schools and whether you think it would be appropriate to have a link to the wellness committee on the website for each of our individual schools so that it becomes more present and more visible. And then secondly, the role of the wellness committees in addressing mental well-being, anxiety, and, you know, just some of the concerns that you raise when you look at your recommended, recommended charge for next year. And so if you see some sort of intersection between the local wellness committee and the work that you would like to do.
I do, and I see you messing with that clock. I wonder about your screen time exposure. I'm a little worried about you. As far as the wellness committees being linked on the school websites, that's a fantastic idea. We should have thought of that. Thank you. Let's do that. We'll talk about it next year if you guys want to do it sooner. That's great. On the issues of mental well-being, anxiety, and et cetera, those hugely important topics that drive so much of why all of us are here in the first place, those are reflected in the metrics. And so if you have better community engagement, student engagement, parent engagement, PTA, the whole deal, you will only improve the accuracy and completeness of the information we have on these. As I tried to start off with, I don't know if I did it effectively, having the youth survey in one hand and having the wellness committee reporting on the other hand lets you really look and see where we're effective and where we're not. Because we want to look at this honestly, because we want to prioritize the health and wellness of students and families and employees. So it is addressed, and I think that the data will continue to improve. If you look at, for instance, on this topic that you raised, whether we successfully address depression, suicide, et cetera, in our schools, in the curriculum, the metric reporting says we do a very good job. It's 4.58 out of 5. So that's emerging or something. However, if you look at the youth survey, 30% of our students have felt depression, 28 or so, I forget the exact number, a high number, an alarming number, have had thoughts of suicide during their high school career. A lot of those will tie those things to student stress, which can be homework, can be caps, can be extensive sports practice, all sorts of things. Now Fairfax County is not hugely outlining the other counties in the country. There are a lot of students all across the country who are feeling stressed, pressured to get into college. You know, the job markets are shrinking, automation is happening, all these things contribute. And so we're not doing a terrible job. We're actually doing a pretty good job. But my whole thinking is that this county is in a better position than most to do better. And so this is why I think more inclusion, more publicity, more participation in these wellness committees will allow us to tailor our curriculum and resources more effectively.
Thank you. I agree with you. Ms. Hines?
I had a question, and this may sound like it's coming out of left field and I maybe should know the answer to this. But when we look at the youth survey data and we look at stress and all the things that we worry about, do we, are we able to go deeper and connect that to home situations? And I ask because, okay, I would say, yeah, I ask because I know we, those of us who are at a certain place in life, you know, we assume that our kids are stressed because they, they're too ambitious and they have too many courses that they take and they're not sleeping enough. But we know that in an increasingly poverty-stricken community with people from all over the world, from all kinds of different circumstances that can bring a lot of stress with them, some of this has to be home circumstance as well. And I'm just wondering.
Some of it is. And you could, you could probably. Some of it is, and you could, you could probably, to interrupt you, do you want to finish? You could probably tease it all out. If you look at whoever came up with the interactive tool for the youth survey data, those people were fabulous. It allows you to compare variables against other variables in a way that you can change them. If you guys haven't played with that, do it.
If you haven't played with it, it is amazing.
So you can tease out correlations between, you can find homework, you can find home situations, you can find other, you know, financial stress, hunger. But one of the things that we keep coming back to is in that same youth survey, there's a list of protective factors that impact students. And it's, you know, it's a number of things. It's access to two parents, it's access to community resources, the whole deal that makes sense. I think if you had the time and resources or if you guys were to direct someone to look into this, you could tease out the correlations between those data points and you could sort of suss out what might be driving what. It's gonna be very difficult to come to conclusive proof that will satisfy everyone, though. I can't convince everyone in the world that cigarettes are bad for you. There are always people who are gonna disagree and say correlation, not causation, and the whole thing. But that, that tool is there, it's very useful. You guys really should take some time. And if you guys could do that to the wellness metrics over the next, it's new, so it takes time. But if we had that ability to sort of compare variables in the same way that we can on the youth survey, that would only increase our toolset.
Well, thank you. And as we start to talk more about trauma-influenced intervention, you know, interventions for trauma-influenced issues, I think that that kind of data could probably help.
And I think that, I mean, we had one committee member who was very interested in trauma and Jenna White called me early in the year and was talking about coming to present to us. And I think she presented maybe to you guys and I said, look, you can go direct. But I was listening to the Title I group and I was thinking, we have a lot of things in common that we care about and it might be good to have one joint meeting or something to talk and compare notes. And I do think we have a lot of trauma that kids are dealing with in our schools that's just ever-present. And so.
I don't think trauma is in the, in the youth survey, though. Is that there?
I don't think trauma is in the youth survey.
That might be worth adding. That's a good point.
I don't think that, I mean, there's hunger.
Right. Thank you.
Components.
Yeah, it's just kind of that, there are so many ways that I think kids feel insecure right now in the world, right? And there's a lot of factors for that. I'm not sure we can take them all into account.
And I think that Groveton program, just giving them tools to build resilience is helpful across the board, right? So it was great to hear what they were doing there and the impact that it was having. And that's the kind of thing, I was thinking, okay, if we could feature that, which I actually have seen it featured, I think, but, you know, you gotta repeat everything multiple times for people to see it.
So Ms. McLaughlin?
I know it's late, so I just want to make a quick follow-up because of some of the comments that I've made this evening. And we had some of this conversation a year ago as well. There are not a lot of things that I'm gonna profess to have a lot of expertise in, but one of them is college admissions. I spent six years doing it at Georgetown, spent a year doing it at Duke. I've seen how the decisions get made. And the landscape can always change, but I just put three kids through the rigors of selective college admissions and saw how it went for them all over again. Our Naviance data also is a rich resource of looking at how kids fare in the college admissions process for Fairfax County. There's a lot of myths out there. You don't have to take more than seven or eight APs and you can get into multiple IVs. I know that firsthand from my own children. That said, there is a mentality out there for the arms race. And there is this idea that, again, what is it going to take? Maybe we're long overdue for another college admissions roundtable, which I know we did in this county back in 2008. And it was wonderful. It really allowed us to have admissions officers come and talk to these things. In the end, I don't necessarily think we're, well, I know for sure we're not solving it tonight. I think that there are very good questions being raised, concerns being raised about how our community will handle it. But I do know one thing about this board. When we focus on the data and the research to drive our conversation, both to dialogue with each other and then with our community, the community will have a deeper confidence in whatever it is we decide to do. And so that's one of the things that I just kind of want to leave everybody with. Well-intentioned conversation, but really unless you've sat inside and seen how the decisions get made, we don't want to necessarily put policies in place that are addressing the wrong thing. I do hear you, David, and very much agree, there is something for sure that Fairfax County can do. And one of those options very well could be saying, do you need to take more than eight APs over the course of your high school career? And you are correct, that Fairfax County could decide that limit in communication with our community. And the colleges would not penalize our kids regardless of what Arlington or Montgomery County and Loudon do, because they do first begin with their review of judging you in the, in the environment that you were taking your courses in. And if we impose a limit, they're not gonna be hurt by that. But again, that's for a longer conversation. And with 3,000 colleges, there's gonna be some variation even in how they do things.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. So with that, if you would like to offer any final remarks before we close out this evening's session, and thank you again for all you guys have done.
You're welcome. I want to briefly point out Stella in the back, who's also a very helpful member of our committee. I didn't name her earlier. So once again, thank you guys for humoring me for the last three years. It's been great. I really, I will ask you, the reason I'm here is I care about all kids, but I also especially care about the kids in my experience and the kids of the similar age group of mine, the ones I know and love and have volunteered with for years. Please help because they're now in middle school. High school's a couple of years away. I really don't want people doing four, five, six hours of homework a night and getting no sleep. I don't need that, they don't need that. And all the parents, all of my collegial parents essentially are in the same boat. Please help. Thanks.
Thank you. And with that. Thank you, and this evening's work session is adjourned.